All right, welcome everyone to the City of South Pasadena Public Works Commission Regular Meeting on this Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P M in the City Council Chambers. We begin with the South Pasadena Commission Statement of Civility. As your appointed governing board, we will treat each other, members of the public and city employees with patience, civility and courtesy as a model of the same behavior. We wish to reflect in South Pasadena for the conduct of all city business and community participation. The decisions made today will be for the benefit of the South Pasadena community and not for personal gain. A notice on public participation and accessibility. Meetings are conducted here in person in the council chambers, but public may also participate via written public comment by emailing. And the meetings may also be viewed via Zoom with details on the website. I'm begin with the roll call now, Raina.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, um, sorry. Vice Chair Ryan Jones.
President.
Commissioner Amari Ferguson. And Commissioner Charles Trevino. Excuse absences for tonight, Commissioner David Malling and Commissioner Sam Hernandez. Council Liaison Mayor Potem Evelyn Snyder. And also in attendance, Public Works Director Ted Gerber and Public Works Analyst myself, Raina Salazar. Thank you.
All right, then please rise if you're able and join us for the pledge of allegiance. All right. And moving on to public comment, it looks like we have some general non-agenda public comment.
Yes, we have a total of three public comments, all general comments. So when I call your name, please kindly go up to the podium on the right side and you have three minutes in total. First up Clint Grenath. Oh, okay. Okay, first up Catherine Hummel.
Hello, my name is Catherine Hummel and I reside at fourteen oh one Oak Crest Avenue in the old South Pasadena Hills. I wanted to start by thanking Ted Gerber being so attentive to us, listening to our concerns about the streets in our neighborhood and also to some of our ideas about traffic calming, which is something to think about a little bit more in the future. The next thing is it is our understanding at this point, we've made up a map. And I think Sue's going to pass one out to you, which shows which streets are contemplated, scheduled to be repaved soon in the city, they've been under design. And our concern has been that there's very little scheduled in District One. So we, just let me get back to my notes here. It's so feeling, it's what we understand is that these will be addressed. This is the next project is to take care of all of these streets that have been, the designs have been prepared for them. And then it's our understanding that after that, the city will come up with a program to go district by district and repave in that way because that's presumably more cost effective to stay in one area. Our concern is that one major, we have had a petition and we presented this to the city council. And Sue will talk more about this, but there is a stretch of Indiana that runs from Alta Vista down to Monterey Road, which is really, really falling apart. It was badly damaged because of some work that was done when the water main broke and other things and just years and years of neglect. And the problem is it's not one of these highlighted streets. And so our concern is that if we go district by district, could it be six to ten years before that street is ever looked at? So we're hoping that there will be some system for including the streets that are the most most seriously needing repair. So that's really the point of my talk right now is to, I, we understand the plan about the district to district, but please keep in mind because and this isn't the only street that's the worst in the city, but it must be one of them. So thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next up Clint Grenath.
Commissioner Members, good evening. Uh, as you can see, there's a number of people here from the old portion of Monterey Hills that are speaking about the condition of our streets and these streets have been neglected for quite some time and we're trying now. You can see a full court press to try to present information to, in a tactical sense, to get repairs of these streets higher on the priority list. I compliment the city and the commission for their long range planning and putting the city on a program for maintenance. Uh, I, I think it's on a seven year cycle. Very great idea. I'm sure you'll find the funding and the interest in the communities to make that happen. But in, uh, in the hills, these hills have been neglected for quite some time. I've lived in that area for over fifty years. And the streets, uh, in the area, I live on Oak Crest Avenue, were in poor condition when I moved in. They've only deteriorated worse since then. As mentioned, the streets in the hills are windy, they're steep. Uh, they're narrow Oak Crest Avenue, curb to curb is eighteen feet. A normal two-way street, the minimum would be twenty-four, two twelve lane, twelve foot lanes. That street, uh, carries also all the pedestrian traffic in the hillside area. And so you've got a lot of students, you have people walk like myself who walk their dog and so forth. We're all using those streets and certainly that condition of Indiana Avenue from Monterey Road on up to Alta Vista is in such shape that, uh, I don't believe there's any city sidewalks that are comparable to the uneven difficult surface that that street has. Since I've lived there, there've been two major projects on Indiana Avenue, one a sewer project and one a water main project. Uh, the area really, if you'll take a look at it, is in very poor condition. It's surviving now just because of the narrow, steep nature of the area. The safe driving speed is probably going up monitor, uh, Indiana there is twenty miles an hour at the most. Going down Indiana towards Via Del Ray, uh, with the windy, uh, streets and short sight distances. Five miles an hour is the, even, even sometimes five miles an hour is too, too speedy. So these streets have survived in these horrible conditions because of the low, uh, speed limit. But there is a lot of pedestrian traffic as well and I would, I would, and my neighbors would really appreciate your looking at these streets and see if we can move them up on the priority list to get them done before, uh, too long. Thank you very much.
Of course, yeah. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Last speaker, Sue Matts.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us. I, this doesn't work on me for some reason, like last time. We both, we were all here for the city council meeting last week and explained our thoughts and our concerns. So we're really happy to be here this evening and thank you for listening to us. Um, I've had the privilege of meeting with Ted and his associate Ariana, Ariane. Last April, I've never had anybody working at the city come to actually see our neighborhood and see what we've been complaining about for decades. And thank you very much. My husband and I have lived here since nineteen ninety, so thirty-three years. And one of my, my most fondest memories of moving to the city, and I'm joking, I'm being ironical, is that I called Public Works in the mid nineties. And when we moved in, just like Clint said, our street was a mess. And I called Public Works and I said, you know, is there any way that we could get our streets paved because they're basically rubble? And the fellow who talked, who spoke with me said, it's going to be at least ten years before we even consider doing anything in the hills. And that was thirty years ago. So still nothing has happened. Um, our street has been paved because I broke my leg on our street because it was in such disrepair, dodging an S U V. So, um, it's very personal for me. I worry about all the kids living in our neighborhood. People are speeding. Our, we have a friend who's been doing some work on our house who waited for us yesterday till we arrived home and said that a government vehicle drove so fast up and down our street that it did not even register on our cameras. We live on a street that is a cul-de-sac. We have a few cul-de-sacs. Oak Crest is a mess. Indiana is a mess. It's very scary. In fact, Clint failed to tell you this evening. He actually twisted his ankle walking his dog on our streets. We've been spending, I think, everybody behind me. We've been working on trying to get our area recognized. And we did for a couple of weeks would approach people to see if they'd like to sign a petition to at least try to do Indiana from Monterey Road up to Alta Vista. So far, because we all are very busy people, I have two hundred and thirty-two signatures. Many more want to sign, but it's getting together with them for them to do it. And I do have copies for you. It's just almost impossible to not trip, twist an angle or fall while both watching for potholes and the quickly approaching vehicles in our neighborhood. So, um, all we're asking is that going forward, if you guys could analyze District One and see how bad our streets are. Our streets are our sidewalks. And our street is only seventeen and a half feet wide. And it was even narrower before they redid our street. So I am asking, please consider going up into our area. I know Ted is concerned to look at what we're living with. It's, it's not fun anymore and I'm getting really tired. I'm getting old too. I do have some things to hand out to you if you guys don't mind.
Please.
There is a house, I know I'm running out of time. There is a house, this has been years, it's got sinkholes. This was just a couple of days ago. I didn't take all the photographs I've taken. It's usually a lake, the full amount, but this had dried out a little bit a couple of days ago. Here's Alta Vista rubble. Here's Indiana broken curbs everywhere rubble. More rubble. And our signatures. And then I took a, I went online, found a copy of a map of our city. I went through all the four pages of streets that are going to be repaired. Our district has one little spot. So these are all for you guys. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Or Raina, do we have any additional public comments?
No, that is all at this time. We do not have any Zoom participants.
Right, then we are moving on to presentations.
Okay.
With an update on the capital improvement program.
Uh, regarding the
I guess, well, we're gonna, yeah, just
Yeah, we can
Attendise for discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, if, um, we can make a motion to itemize, um, street condition topic for a later meeting. Um, if you
You know, the other thing is, if I may, um, we are talking about the capital improvement program tonight, which includes streets. So if you, if you want to discuss it generally with related to the program, you could, uh, do it with this item.
I, the, the streets are deplorable, Rob, a lot of our city. So is this going to be addressed in your C I P plan, Ted, on, on street?
Yeah, we'll talk about it briefly. Yeah.
And which streets?
Yeah, I can, we can share which streets. I didn't bring the map, but I think we actually have it on the drive. We could pull that up too. So absolutely, if you'd like to discuss that.
All right, I, um, want to make sure that, that, and I, you're doing great job and I appreciate that, you know, you and I have worked on other things, especially on water.
Yes.
So, so I just want to make sure that we are going to cover that. Uh, that this, this handout, I mean, it's pretty extensive, a lot of information.
It's a lot going on. Yeah, we'll go through it.
Wonder if you're going to kind of cover it all or we come back and just say again?
Um, well, our hope today was, was, uh, to overview what we've got going on with our capital improvement program and just quickly touch on the status of the projects that are underway. We can, uh, dive, uh, deeper and in more detail in anything we, the commission, um, would like to. It's, the capital improvement program is part of our work plan, so it's fair game as far as, um, topics for meetings.
I'm just saying that, you know, it's a lot of information. I want to make sure we can digest it properly.
Sure, yeah, of course. Yeah, so we'll do an overview tonight. We can dive in a couple of different areas, either briefly this evening or an extensive conversation with another meeting also.
Thank you, Ted.
Perfect, of course.
Um, so, uh, believe it or not, it's been, uh, six months about since we've talked about our capital improvement program. We adopted it at the begin, at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we discussed this in May before we, um, adopted the budget in June. These are the, um, the eleven categories that we have for our capital improvement program. So our, our entire program is a five-year program. But we're highlighting the projects that, uh, are on this year's, uh, C I P and just going to give you a brief overview. Uh, for those of you that are familiar or remember some of these projects, uh, for those of you who are not, uh, we can, uh, give you a little more detail. But we're going to give you just an overview of where we are, um, you know, in just starting in November. So, uh, having finished a little over one quarter of the fiscal year. So our first area is general building facilities. So these are the projects that we had, uh, planned that we were, uh, trying to, uh, either continue or initiate this year. Um, the ones that are highlighted are the ones that we have active work on. Sorry, Raina, if you didn't mind jumping, oh, there we go. Um, so we had the citywide facility assessment, security enhancement and citywide facility repairs as one project. It's sort of a catch-all because what we found is, as we were breaking out facility projects, we had just so many. There's twelve buildings in the city. They all, um, basically need some level of, uh, rehabilitation or additional work or maintenance. So the priority prioritization for that, uh, without a facilities master plan was very difficult. So we basically grouped this into one project and funded it so that we could handle, uh, projects as they came up as necessary. So what we've already completed is we replaced the furnace on top of, um, City Hall. That brought, we brought a crane in and we did all that work. The next step for, uh, the city hall, for City Hall is to provide some security enhancements to a number of the facilities here, council chambers, city hall itself. And so we've been working on a scope of work for that and we're going to bring that to, uh, council in the near future to, um, evaluate and design that, uh, those enhancements.
Has there been some security threat or incidents that has led to the
Um, I, I don't know if there's been a specific one. It's more about, um, you know, uh, for example, uh, preparing for, say, um, well, I'm trying to think how to put this, like preparing the facility for when, if there is some sort of issue that, um, you know, like if there was, say, an active shooter type of problem at City Hall, just many cities and many agencies are trying to prepare their facilities for the general nature of something like that that could happen. Sure. Um, so the, uh, the second one that's highlighted there is some upgrades to the police station. Um, these have been on the books for, uh, some time now. Again, there's, uh, you know, most of the people from the public don't see the inside of the station, hopefully, so, um, they wouldn't be privy to this. But there, it's an older building and so there's a lot of different, um, maintenance needs inside the facility. Um, we are trying to just tackle sort of the low hanging fruit at the moment. So we're trying to upgrade, um, the painting and the, and the basically casework and the drywall where it needs it inside the, the, um, inside the main, uh, facility. Uh, the third one we have there on this is senior center flooring. So, um, part of the senior center was refloored, um, a few years back. This project is just basically to finish the flooring. And there is some funding that we expect from, um, I think it's the Senior Foundation to complete that. It's just, uh, there's a few other bid packages that we have to complete first, which we'll talk about. And so that's basically been prioritized, uh, a few down the line. Um, last item in this page, oh, sorry, one more on there. A new category this year is utilizing some of the city's housing authority money. The city is a landlord essentially. There's a tenant facility, um, near the Royal Channel uh, at three oh eight San Pasquale. Um, that residence does need regular maintenance and so there's, um, tenant fees that get paid into an account. And so this would just be basically expending some of those fees to, uh, fix things at the, uh, at the house. Yes. Um, it's, there's a family that lives in it, uh, it's rented out. So it's city-owned, uh, single-family residence, very interesting situation. Yeah. So on our I T list, we have a number of projects going. The four that are, um, our management services is really taking the lead on getting these done. Um, our VoIP phone system, so that sounds fancy, but it's really just a, a standard, modern phone system. Uh, right now, we just basically have, you know, an older, um, like R J forty-five standard old phone system that we have, like basically I have an answer machine on my desk that fills up every day. So we're actually taking the city to the current level of modern phone technology and bringing in, um, phones. They're essentially computerized phones, but they're just like anything you have in your office. This also allows our staff to, um, utilize their computer as their phone. And so when they're working remotely or they're working offsite, uh, they can still be connected into the city system. Uh, I'll take the last three together. We have an agenda management system, which basically, um, allows us to not form these just with, you know, Microsoft Word and typing each one of these up. We actually have a staff report system that makes the, um, review and approval process more efficient. Uh, a, uh, upgrade to our website that makes it a lot more accessible and modern and easier to find information. Um, and then lastly, we've finished the first phase of a permit management software implementation, which allows developers, residents, businesses to, um, you know, continue to apply for, uh, development permits and we can track all those in a computer system versus say tracking them just on like an Excel sheet or in a file folder. Uh, the next section of this page is our community services and parks projects. So we did talk about these projects, I think, in our last meeting specifically. But just to return to them, uh, the Gravalia and Berkshire Pocket Parks. We've, uh, completed the design. It's basically at like ninety-five, ninety-nine percent done. There's a couple of little tweaks to it. Uh, we're developing the specifications package that gets issued as the construction documents. And we're expecting to issue that bid package, um, shortly. And we would bring a contract to word to council to construct both of those parks. One's on Berkshire and one's on Gravalia. Also recently discussed, uh, the city replaced the, um, netting around the driving range on the, uh, north, um, side. The south and west sides are older. Um, I'm not sure how old they are, but they need to be replaced. And so we have a project, a design contract prepared, uh, to bring to council to start that design work. Jump to the next slide. Um, we segregated library projects out separately because it's, it's basically its own specialized facility. We had applied to, we had conducted an assessment of the library as a document that would help us apply for a grant. We applied for a state grant with a library to co-fund these projects. Unfortunately, we didn't get any funding out of it. Um, the state had prioritized, um, other cities with higher needs in lower income areas. Uh, we're going to try to pursue additional funding. Um, so we won't be able to, uh, fully fund all the projects on this list. So our next step is really to reprioritize these with the funding that we have set aside. Uh, likely looking at, um, the library roof, uh, some of the facility improvements and maybe the H vac systems. Um, in the meantime, we've been keeping up with the maintenance on the H vac systems. Um, and then separately, uh, the city has initiated a process to pull together teams, uh, different members of different departments to start to develop a R F P for a library master plan. So this would be a long ran range planning document to cover how to fund, um, future improvements to the library, perhaps rebuild the library. And so that's an exciting, um, exciting initiative for the city to envision, you know, a library of the future, basically a community center. Jump to the next slide. So these are our utility projects. Um, so sewer, uh, as we talked about, I think in maybe two or three meetings ago. We, the city has largely rehabbed most of its sewer infrastructure, but there are a number of projects yet to be done. Um, and so I'll get into this a little bit farther when we talk about streets, but we're now coupling our streets, water and sewer projects together. And so as we develop the next streets bid package, which was part of the map that, um, our public commenter showed, uh, the, the next, uh, bid package will also include sewer and water improvements. Yes, um, so, uh, we've applied every year for the last couple of years. We plan on applying again in July. Oh, no, you're fine. Uh, so you know, we, uh, we have some successes and failures with that funding. Um, so in this, in this pink list, the, uh, Camino Verde Pocket Park, we were awarded some funding to conduct a feasibility study. Actually, we just kicked that off today. We, uh, did receive, uh, W funding for a Royo Seco San Rafael. We were, um, rejected for the Loyar Royal, but we actually just resubmitted. And then we were rejected for Huntington, but we're going to resubmit this year also.
Follow up, real quick follow-up. Uh, on City Hall Stormwater Project, if you, is that part of the, the package that you submitted? I mean,
Um, so that one, we, we have the funding from, uh, Metropolitan Water District. We didn't submit for, um, W on that or measure W on that. Um, that we actually have that, uh, essentially fully funded with, um, the city's stormwater reserve. Uh, some of the water efficiency money that we get, um, through our water billing system and then also Metropolitan also came up with, uh, co-funding for that.
I got this full disclosure. I sit on the regional oversight committee for Prop W, so I just, that's the reason of that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Um, and so you'll go into those stormwater projects are, that first one that's highlighted there, uh, we're, that's a joint project with Pasadena. The design is ninety percent complete. We're actually just finished the environmental and we've, um, submitted it. Uh, I think that the, um, we're going to open up the comment period on the environmental very soon. Um, there's still a few things to figure out with that project, especially the, um, water, um, purification system. This is This is, this is designed to pour water off of the Arroyo Seco. Um, it comes into a wetland and then we can utilize uh, some of that water to offset the um, potable water demand at the golf course. We're already watering the golf course with Arroyo Seco water. This project would actually uh, clean it up. Um, and then lawyer, lawyer, lower Arroyo Seco projects uh, sort of continue um, improvements all the way along the Arroyo Seco in the baseball and soccer fields, the golf course and the driving range. Um, we submitted a large package, um, as Commissioner Trevino had said, to, to get that funded. Um, we didn't receive any funding for that because the package was so large and we didn't have any co-funding. So we broke up the projects, we uh, made an agreement with Caltrans to help us fund it. Um, and we've resubmitted and it's currently being considered by the watershed area steering uh, committee right now for possible funding. Um, Heinten Drive was a, is a project to build a, um, basically a, a tunnel um, underneath Huntington Drive that would capture water from all of Fair Oaks and a little bit from Pasadena and then infiltrate that water or use it for irrigation. Um, it's very difficult to get funding nowadays because unless you really develop a project, you figured out your geotechnical and you figured out your environmental and you basically have a design that's almost kind of shovel-ready, it's hard to get construction dollars. Um, and so we were rejected last year for not having all that work done. What we're trying to do is bring this project to council to use some of our um, our W money, our stormwater money um, to get some of that work done and then resubmit and hopefully get construction dollars. Um, I mentioned Camino Verde Pocket Park, we're, we're doing a feasibility study basically to install a, a um, water capture device underneath the park. Um, and then our City Hall Stormwater Project's a really interesting project, it would be in the um, parking lot right across here. It's co-funded by Metropolitan and it basically puts in cisterns underneath the parking lot that capture area water, uh, store it and use it for the irrigation in this, in this local area. And that's an interesting project because it's kind of coupled with um, a separate project, we'll talk about building solar panels over the parking lot. Um, and so that's actually next on our list, our sustainability. As many of you know, we're undergoing a project to um, electrify City Hall um, fleet. So we are installing charger stations in the police lot, the fire lot and the um, city staff public lot. This is mostly funded by Southern California Edison. Um, and so right now, uh, Edison has completed their design, we've approved it. Um, we're in the permitting process, so uh, we expect that to be in construction early next year. And then lastly, uh, the solar panel installation, again, fully funded by one of our partner agencies, the Clean Power Alliance. Um, and so they are under the process of uh, selecting their developer. Let's jump to the next slide. Okay, why am I even waiting here for, for streets? So um, so we, we set up the CIP account as one large uh, account, but it's actually multiple street projects. So we uh, expect um, four successive projects to happen over the next year. Um, so the first project, we recently bid and actually it was awarded to a contractor um, last week at council. And it includes uh, four streets in uh, Monterey from Pasadena to the west limits of the city. Um, Alta Vista from Indiana to Oak Crest. Um, Forest from Mission North, it's sort of like a, like kind of like a cul-de-sac. And then another cul-de-sac Sterling from Grand to um, basically like the one where the one-ten freeway is. Um, so that's the first set of streets. Uh, the second set of streets is a longer list, I'll, I'll try to pull up the map, oh, oh, please, Commissioner.
Alta Vista is from uh, Indiana to where?
To Oak Crest, yeah, so it's a, like a little bit of a bridge um, through the hills there. And, and I think we, it is a short run, I'll tell you that um, it's treacherous and, and so this project, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, th- this project includes a lot of um, so the, the street projects are to varying degrees. So this project is one of our most severe degree projects. It basically has to dig out uh, below ground, um, recompact the soil and then rebuild the street. So some of these streets are in such bad shape that there's uh, extensive dig-out and concrete rebuild work to do. And then as, in addition, in addition to the asphalting, so that's one of four projects. Um, we have a second project that's very similar in the same respect to that, an additional set of streets. And I think we have a map in our drive, I'll pull up in one moment. Our third project is more of the lighter type of street resurfacing, it's like a treatment project where streets that aren't in such bad shape, we can resurface before they get into bad shape. Uh, so we're, it's kind of like a slurry, like Cape Seal type project. And then the fourth project is focused on just one intersection, um, Mission, Pasadena and Arroyo, which is a, if you are familiar with it, it's a complex intersection, um, it's all concrete roadway. Um, and you know, our stop signs get knocked down pretty often there. The project would reconfigure that intersection to create uh, pedestrian walkways in all directions and also bikeway access and really uh, tighten up and make that intersection much, much safer. Um, so those are the, those are the, the succession of the four projects. Now, I'll say that um, the first and second projects, as our public commenter mentioned, have already been selected. They've basically been on the books for some time and design work and expense has already gone into them. So our strategy was to carry those projects through to completion instead of, you know, abandoning them for other streets. But our third project, which is a, basically a resurfacing project, we have not yet selected those streets. And that is the program uh, that was discussed earlier where we're trying to efficiently select those streets in an area approach. Now, the area approach is really intended to be um, a sort of maintenance cycle approach for the future. Meaning that if all streets being equal and all streets were in decent shape and we really just had to maintain them every year, we should do it area by area, so that with seven areas, you're basically redoing, you're maintaining streets every seven years. And in theory, they won't fall to the state of condition they're in now. Um, but given that we have such a backlog to accomplish and there may be streets that we have to do um, maybe outside of the area approach until then, that's what we're trying to figure out right, right now, like how to go about that. So landing in the area approach years from now is the um, expectation. But knowing that that might not be the immediate need at the moment, so we're trying to navigate, you know, the way, the weighing, the cost benefit of, you know, considering just the condition versus considering the condition, you know, the water line, the sewer line, other utilities need to be replaced, things like that. Um, if I can take one moment, I'm gonna jump down here in this area and see if we can pull up a map for you to show you what we're talking about. So, you know, on your screen, you'll see a map. Um, and there's multiple colors here, so I'll try to navigate you through that. You can ignore the yellow for one moment, oh, please, Commissioner, yes.
Is, are there specific items on, on, I that uh, require uh, vote that would need to achieve?
Um, no, we, this is uh, informational item. I will, this, uh, the only item that we have that requires a vote is a selection of officers. Yeah, do we want to um, move to that item and maybe return to this? We could do that too, sure.
Great.
Right, and quick roll call on that, Commissioner Jones?
Uh, sure.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Ferguson, Commissioner Trevino.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes unanimously to table, uh, item number three, selection of officers.
Right.
Yes.
Um, as well, we may need to do the approval of the minutes while we have enough people for that?
Yes, that's at your discretion, if you'd like to also um, move item number four, approval of the minutes for September to the next meeting. So then we would approve these minutes as well as September minutes.
Probably a good idea, because I'll be obtaining that one here. Let's, let's table and put on the next one.
Okay, we'll go ahead and make a motion to move that. Um, do I have a motion from anybody?
Make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, second? Okay, quick roll call, Commissioner Jones?
Hi.
Commissioner Ferguson, Commissioner Trevino?
All right.
Motion passes unanimously to table, uh, approval of minutes for September thirteen to the next um, regular meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so just to quickly walk you through this, uh, I don't want to take too much time. Um, so ignore the yellow lines for one moment. The orange lines are streets that have recently been completed over some years. Um, the blue lines, I'm sorry, the uh, red lines, so you can see them. Um, there's one in the hills there, that's Alta Vista, uh, there's two up there, Sterling and Forest. And then there's Monterey on the west side of the map. Those are the ones that we've just awarded a contract to, we'll be starting uh, shortly with construction. The ones that are currently in the designed phase uh, to be part of the next package are the blue lines. So we've got Arroyo Vista, a Pine, Maple, Onion, Antinol, um, Edgewood, a little section Milan, uh, Mill. Um, and I think that covers it, oh, Glendon, the little section of Glendon Way. Um, and then that tiny little blue at Pasadena, Arroyo and Mission is that uh, design package I told you about. So again, this doesn't include the sort of simpler resurfacing projects that have yet to be mapped out in the city based on some approach that we're working on. So the, this is the draft areas that were, we've been discussing. Um, the idea is it equally divides up the city and we've used these color zones to indicate it. Nothing has been determined yet, right now what we're trying to do is assess these areas for how much uh, work there is to do just to bring streets up to, you know, a decent condition so that they eventually could be under a maintenance program. So we have to come up with those numbers and then determine, you know, projections on financing before we can determine how to move forward. Hopefully that helps answer some of the questions about the program.
I had a question though about the um, selection of the new streets, and I think that's what the commenters are sort of pointing at is what method, is it gonna be like a, like a citizen identification thing for the streets? It sounds like they, the concerns they're raising are above just street complaints, it's liability, it, the city liability at this point.
Absolutely, so up until now, um, the uh, the ma- the, the major factor in selecting the streets has been purely the condition. Um, so we do have a, um, actually, Raina, do you mind rolling back a couple of slides? Um, we have a, can, we do it, we conduct a condition survey of all the streets to determine, you know, how bad they are. Uh, it's back.
City team that does that?
It's actually a, a consultant that is expert in pavement management um, surveying. Um, and so they basically index the streets, I think go back one more, uh, that one, that one right there. So you can see here, there's like a heat map, like a color map, the red is very poor. Um, all the way up to very good, and I'll say that this map's not accurate with very good because at the time this was done in twenty twenty, the consultant was relying on the fact that these streets were going to, were, had been done already, but they hadn't been, the, the city was so far behind in the work. We've re-initiated this team to do a survey that they're working on now. Um, and so the streets that you um, that are being done mostly correspond to the poorest street conditions in the city. It's not exactly a one-to-one, I don't know how those streets got selected over time. But our intention is to use this as the major factor, as the public commentators had mentioned, but also to consider a few other factors. And that is also the condition of the water, the sewer, which are also, especially the sewer is a compliance issue. Um, and what are the utility workers going on there? Um, i- i- you know, in addition to, you know, other factors with regard to like uh, traffic safety and things like that. And so we're trying to basically come up with a plan considering what's the most cost-effective way for us to do this. If we say have a concentration of water breaks in a particular area, um, we don't want to necessarily resurface that street without doing that water replacement. Um, and if we have one street and another street that are in both in poor condition, we may perhaps prioritize the one that we understand that the sewer needs to be repaired, you know, in short order. So we're just trying to weight the factors a little bit more cost-effectively, given the big picture that the city has to undertake. Um, instead of just relying on the condition alone. Or, you know, in, input from the citizens. Input from the citizens is very helpful because this is all done, you know, in a sample method. Our surveyors look at small sections of the street, they give us this feedback on a zero to a hundred rating. It doesn't necessarily capture some of the things that you'll hear from residents complain, like a sinkhole or a, a curb that's been destroyed. Um, we've modified the surveyor's approach this year, we've asked them to look at things like sidewalk and curb and gutter um, condition in addition to just the pavement, because this just shows you asphalt or concrete depending on the street. Doesn't always show you all of the aspects of a street. And so there's a lot of factors to consider and certainly citizen um, input is a huge factor because then we know like, well, maybe we have to take a second look at this and see if it's accurately rated.
Right. Especially in case there are narrow streets, that's like the single point of access to people and the streets in this repair, it's not like a wide street where you can ride around, right? And so um, I think that those are things that need to be weighted in the analysis. Um, utilization types of traffic, um, one of the things that it just, it's striking is being crazy that it would include sidewalks, because I think the better your sidewalks, the better your bike lanes, then the less you be effectively need that street, you know? Um, so if you're not accounting for multimodal transportation, you're ultimately forcing more people into cars, you're just gonna wear your streets faster, right? And so um, yeah, I would like to see um, more of how that analysis is being conducted and determined. And then also have a lot more pathways for uh, community input into that process. Um, because I think that ultimately that's who the streets are gonna serve. And so um, I think that a lot of this has happened in a way that um, obscures that a little bit.
That's a great comment, I think those are important factors for us to consider. We're really just getting started with this process, um, we showed you the map, I think, last meeting. Um, and the full intention was to, both through this commission and our transportation commission, take you through what our thoughts were, get your recommendations on the approach before we even approach council on adopting some sort of um, plan. Do you, do you mean at the same time, oh, I see what you mean, as a joint meeting, yes, I understand, yes, of course, um. Understood, yeah. So um, and to the other comment about sidewalks, um, so we do include the improvements of sidewalks where it's necessary on the reconstruction projects. So for example, our, our current project, we're reconstructing side, side, sections of sidewalks on Monterey and um, Forest. As we heard tonight, there are no sidewalks in Alta Vista, um, and then there's no sidewalks on, well, there's sidewalks on Sterling, but um, they're in actually But um they're in actually decent shape. Um and so we won't spend sidewalk um restructuring uh resources when the sidewalks are okay. Um but it doesn't necessarily mean we'll be able to tackle sidewalks on, say, the lower impact resurfacing projects because, you know, we're trying to get our bang for buck in pure asphalt, you know, refreshing and those types of projects.
Ultimately, it's like if there should be some, a lot, like you say, like if a street doesn't have a sidewalk, like we should be thinking about ways in which we're gonna have a sidewalk there in the future. Um in the case of like Hill Drive, looking at the, one of those previous slides, it was redone. And I mean, I lived near there and there's no sidewalk there. And so it's like, it's not even on the radar as being a consideration. And when we're putting the money into resurancing the street, we're not even accounting for these other like ways of it can be utilized in the community, even though we're still committing the resources to it. And so um and so I think like at some point, there should be a definition of what we as a community believe should be a standard for our streets. And if that means a sidewalk some width or whatever, that's our standard. And then if something's substandard, then we can prioritize it based on it. Maybe someday being a standard. And so like if we're talking about in the case of like, you know, the um, it was Miss Max, was it? Oh, um it's uh if they've gone like ten years and we're gonna be done programming it, it's another seven years. And then when it's, once it does finally, so we're talking potentially seventeen years, something is done. And then it's done and it's not to a standard sidewalk or whatever, then we put ourselves on thirty-four years essentially of that never having a sidewalk. And so that just doesn't seem to me like a very reasonable approach to doing that.
It's a very good point. Um you know, as we, and this ties into not just the streets conversation, but it ties into zoning and development also. So um where we're, where we have a location in the city where we have somebody developing a private property, if there's a decent amount of public right-of-way in front of the property, we'll require um or at least plan for a sidewalk to be put in in the future. Unfortunately, a lot of the hillside areas, the right, the restrictions of the right-of-way, there was the comment tonight was like, you know, the streets um eighteen feet wide, there's just no room for sidewalks. Um and you know, uh acquiring the property from the all of the private residences along the right-of-way and then actually having to build in the retaining walls to build the sidewalk. So it then may become infeasible. But yeah, your comments well um is valid in where appropriate and and feasible, adding those multimodal um access pathways like sidewalks uh makes sense. So, you know, for example, Monterey, um we're taking this opportunity and it's in concert with our bike mobility plan to add um bicycle lanes on Monterey from Pasadena to the west side of the city and actually connect the bike lanes that are coming from LA. So that's an opportunity that we saw in the project and we, we took that opportunity. Oh, um you had mentioned it, but I don't think we talked about it tonight. Yeah. So. Thank you so much. We're almost there, but no problem. Thank you so much. Yeah. Streets are just too popular. Yeah. Um yes, and that's a, that's a, uh I appreciate that comment. Uh really, one of the important next steps here is to have this um uh five, at least a five-year projection financing conversation with our finance department as they're doing that on their own exercise. Um and so that's a good uh comment as far as revenue sources for street resurfacing. Of course. Sorry, Raina, to make you jump back to the other one. So on, on that same uh category, sidewalk replacement repairs. So um we don't have a lot of uh funding dedicated from the city for sidewalk replacement repairs. We do use a substantial amount of the money we get from HUD, uh from the Community Development Block Grant money to put into sidewalk, specifically ADA improvements. Um we haven't spent this money for a few years in the city, so we actually um sort of renegotiated a um what we call an off-cycle project with uh the LA County Development Authority. Um and so now we have a sizable amount of money, close to about a half million dollars that we can invest in sidewalk repairs. We had already identified a number of intersections along Meridian, especially near um the high school to improve. Uh and we've um, we're looking at other locations that, spot locations that might need it. Unfortunately, when you're talking about um sidewalk, concrete, ADA ramp work, uh you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars doesn't go a whole long way because it's expensive to recon, to do that type of work. So we're working with um LACDA right now to develop a bid package for that work to commence this fiscal year. Okay, two left. Uh our transportation category. Um so we have a lot of transportation projects that are, are in their early stages. Um these might not mean anything on the face, but our north-south corridor is basically a reprogramming of the signals along Fair Oaks. Uh that's in the environmental phase. Um Fremont Huntington is a project that could reconfigure all of Fremont and all of Huntington to add um active transportation, multimodal elements, and also safety improvements. We just had a very expansive um planning charrette process at the community room library over the last a month or so. We had our, our um designer out here and they came up with some great concepts. Uh so we're working through that process. We'll be adding RRFPs, which are rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the intersections of um on Mission Street and also Fremont Mission and Diamond, and Mission and uh Fairview, and then uh Fremont Linden. That bid package is pretty much ready. We're just trying, we were trying to get our street package out. Now we're trying to get our pocket pack, pocket park package out. And that's actually the third one we'll be getting out is the uh RRFP package. Uh and what I mean getting out, I mean getting out for uh contractors to bid on. We have projects that we were, um we sought funding and, and we're trying to secure the funding for uh the Gravalia Street and Fair Oaks intersection. There's, if you're driving down Gravalia and you take a right on Fair Oaks, there's kind of that weird awkward right turn that you know, people kind of boggle around. So we have a design idea for that. And then also adding some pedestrian crossing devices in locations of the city um where we have a lot of foot traffic.
What is that?
So um a pedestrian crossing device can be anywhere between, from a, from an RRFP where you push a button and it flashes and halts the traffic to like a, like what we call a hawk, which is actually almost kind of like a, a traffic signal but for people. Uh and so we have about three hundred thousand dollars for Metro to spend on those devices. Again, doesn't go a long way. Each of those can cost up to eighty, ninety a piece just for the RRFP. The hawks can cost like a hundred fifty or so. So we think we can probably squeeze two or three devices out of that. Um we have some ideas where to place them um based on the recommendations from M-Tech. We're just trying to get our funding agreement secured so we can actually start that work. And the last one I'll highlight is the Fair Oaks uh interchange on and off ramps. This is a massive project. Tens of millions of dollars that we've been granted from the, from Metro and Caltrans because the seven-ten wasn't built. And the idea is to actually um mitigate some of the traffic issues that stem from um that current interchange um by possibly building um a loop ramp. Uh so that uh folks who are driving, wouldn't, driving north, wouldn't take a left to get on the freeway. It'd actually take a right and then go under the bridge to get on the freeway. And the idea is that it would um reduce some of that AM and PM, you know, mess of congestion that you see all the way along down Fair Oaks. It is, i- i- it was the hook ramp. Um the hook ramp, the configuration went up to Pasadena and through their power plant and back down. Um it, we determined that was infeasible because we wouldn't be able to acquire the property or build it through that neighborhood. So actually, the new loop ramp idea is squeezes the project between State Street and the one-ten. Very narrow area. If you ever walked that area, you see there's a abandoned ramp there um with a gate over it. And so you would, we basically uh squeezed State Street slightly. And it would be a, a very interesting um, very tight ramp um that, you know, if it wasn't on the one-ten, it would, probably would never fly, but most all the ramps on the one-ten are kind of strangely shaped. Uh so it's a possibility that we could build that ramp in that way. Yep, exactly. It's like a hairpin turn, basically. Yeah. And so, you know, the, there's not supposed to be uh trucks on the one-ten to begin with. So this wouldn't be modeled for more than like a forty-foot, you know, bus, basically. So. Okay, last page, I promise here. Um is our water page. You don't mind jumping the next slide, Raina?
Okay.
Oh. Um, no problem, Raina. Do you want to jump to the next slide? Thank you so much. Okay, lastly, our water projects. And so the ones we've highlighted here are water main pipeline repairs again. Um in our next bid package with streets, we're implementing um pipeline replacements. We have many pipeline replacements to do, both to increase the capacity for adequate fire flow and also just replace aging pipes. Um and then lastly, our west side reservoir. Um we conducted a uh seismic and structural evaluation, which we shared with this commission. Um our plan was to pr- produce that to council and then also um move forward with a preliminary design report contract uh authorized by council. And we just haven't been able to do that yet, given our workload, but that's in our plan as the next step for that um project. So my last slide just sort of summarizes some of our high priority next steps, and we have quite a bit of them. This doesn't even touch on all the projects we talked about tonight. But uh you know, for street construction, we're gonna conduct outreach to talk to, to contact all the residents that are gonna be affected. Certainly in places like Alta Vista, it's gonna be very difficult to navigate in that area as we're reconstructing the street. Um working with South Cal Edison to complete the EV charging permitting, putting out our Papica Park construction bid package. Uh contracting some of these small project facility repairs that we listed there. And many things to bring to council. We have to bring uh due to the procurement requirements, bringing our uh golf course driving range netting replacement design. Revisiting the library projects budget based on the fact that we didn't get the grant that we were hoping to get to match uh for those projects. Amending our second Streets Packet's bid package design contract with council. We need a little, we need to, um we have enough funding, but we need to extend the contract. Uh we need to split the contract up so that we can um bid that uh next set of streets and then separate out the Mission Pasadena um Arroyo spot um project. And the reason we want to split those up is because the Mission Pasadena Arroyo is such a complicated design. Um if we waited till that design was done to actually do the other streets that are tied in with it, it would, we would uh basically waste a lot, basically be waiting a long time before we had another set of streets to resurface, if that makes sense. So that, we actually want to split those packages up, go with the more routine work on the uh blue streets you saw on the map, and then keep that one intersection uh separate. Bringing our Huntington Drive Stormwater Project contract to council, bringing our City Hall Stormwater Project to council, bringing our West Side Reservoir Design Report contract to council, completing the Fremont Fair Oaks Huntington Planning Charrette Process. We've done all the community work. Now we just have to complete the reports. And then lastly, we've um developed a very comprehensive scope for this loop ramp project. Um we're ready to bring that to council uh shortly also. Um so with that, any questions?
Further comment on that?
It won't be all at once. We've got a lot of things to bring. So we have at least, I think there's a couple items that we're already um bringing next week, so. Okay. Yeah, I, if there's no questions, I think we're, thank you so much.
So it looks like we've moved on with our two action discussion items.
So I got, I got bit by, I got five mosquito bites while sitting here for a bite. Um and so um seeing me looking down at my hands during the meeting is because I'm counting the number of bites that I got while sitting in this chair today. And so um near and dear to me is figuring out something, a citywide program for a mosquito abatement. I think if the city had the stomach to mitigate E-fowl, um I think mosquito should be uh something that we're willing to uh think about. Um so um uh the vector, I understand the county has their vector control. I don't know if any of you have ever contacted them, but uh basically somebody coming to my house giving me a pamphlet is not what I'm looking for. Um I know that there's also no amount of money that I can spend within the boundaries of my property to mitigate a mosquito issue. And so I would love to see there being something that is a community approach. And I think Public Works would likely be the ones ending up doing it. So um it's something.
So um so first, I, I think, you know, I, I think we can um certainly have a discussion. I, I just wanna for the gen, for agenda purposes, I think we can uh as Commissioner Communications, we can take this item up for your, for your comments. We don't have uh mosquito abatement um agendized with any commission. So just for the, to explain this to the group and to the um, to the public, uh our commission work plans, which direct the items that are on the agenda, are um are associated with this council strategic plan. Um and so it, it basically as the, as the city staff and the council set the strategic plan for the year, then they set the uh work plans. And so that's why we don't have anything really agendized here or with the Environmental Commission. It could, it could be an item that um corresponds with an environmental agenda item, just depending on which direction uh the city goes with its strategic planning and if they want to take that up as a priority, essentially. If that helps sort of frame the conversation. So, so tha- that's the, that's the challenge is that um we are, are really supposed to follow our work plan as far as agenda goes? Of course, yeah.
We do have, oh, we do have um former mayor Bob Joe as our representative um liaison between the city and the vector, the LA County. And once a year, he um gives us the report and probably that would be the time um that we can suggest a um citywide plan or mitigation of um mosquitoes. I, I, I don't know what his um agenda with the um LA County vector control is, but we can certainly reach out to him.
Sure. And then also as um, as our city staff uh meets to discuss the strategic plan for the coming year, um I'll certainly take your comment as a, you know, as a commissioner comment on terms of uh recommendations for uh prioritization.
Alright, so that, let's go on to City Council Liaison Communications then.
The only comment I have was um we participated in the twenty twenty-three Arroyo Fest with um four thousand runners, bicyclists and um uh joggers. Uh and they closed the one-ten freeway um on, uh I think that, that was October la- one Sunday, um last Sunday, I think, uh from the end of the uh one-ten freeway north towards the uh Avenue twenty-six. So it, it was a lot of TV coverage and um and that happened in, the first one happened in twen- two thousand oh-three, so it's like uh a gap of twenty years and then, and then this year. So we hope that it could happen um in the next five years instead of waiting for another twenty years. So that was spectacular.
I, I, I brought my kids out. It was a great time. It was a great time. My daughter apparently was involved in that. Six.
Put my daughter on this thing.
I really would like to thank Public Works because they laid out everything, the logistical stuff, and they spent many hours of, probably they lived there for like 24 hours. Thank you so much, Ted. And thank, thank you for your wonderful crew. And they work endless hours, like 16 to 20 hours a day. It was, it was, I mean, terrific, the end results.
You would have never known that it hadn't been 20 years. Like they did this all the time. They ran so smooth. So, you know.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, great partnership with San Gabriel Valley Cog and Active SGB. And there was a volunteer corps there. There's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of contributions there. Thank you so much.
Jeff Liaison Communications.
So I think the only item we have, we'll be meeting again in January. Until then, just some city events. I believe the holiday lighting is scheduled for November 30th. And then we have the state of the city, which I think is December 5th. So you'll probably find those on our website on the city calendar. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Ted. Are adjourned at, looks like 7:50?
Yes. All of my, just so different. Yes. Thank you. Yay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.